I'd like to call the Thursday, March 5th, 2020, Public Hearing Special Meeting, Public Work Session to order. And at this time, would you please stand for a moment of silence? Amen. But you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll read the mission statement. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. Next item is attendance. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Mrs. Schumake.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Parent.
Present.
Six members present, three members absent.
Thank you. At this time, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Williams and second by Ms. Allen. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yep.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Is unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is Proposed 2021 Operating Budget. Public Hearing. Dr. Bracy. Do we have?
We don't have any.
Any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Presentation: Recognition of the SBA School Board Appreciation Month, February 2020, which we missed, but now we're in the march. We still can be appreciated.
Still want to recognize you all. So I have the certificates, and I will read one. They're all the same. It says, "The Virginia School Boards Association Certificate of Recognition and Appreciation of Your Dedication in Service to Excellence in Education on behalf of the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Appreciation Month, February 2020." And assigned by the President, Rodney Jordan, and Executive Director, Gina Patterson. And at this time, I will have these.
Well, thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You've all been appreciated.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy.
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the Discussion of Budget Update. Dr. Bracy, is that going to be you, or is that going to be Mr. Falk?
Mr. Falk is going to give a brief overview as to where we are and where the state is with the budget.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, School Board Members. Dr. Bracy, I just wanted to give you a brief update on where the state is in the budget. If you recall from our last few school board meetings, superintendent's estimate of needs was based on Governor's Northern's budget, which was released on December 17, 2019. Since that time, the House of Delegate and the Senate have approved their changes and amendments to the Governor's budget on February 16. At this point, Senate and House budgets have distinct differences. So they're in conference committee right now to kind of work out the differences that they have so that a budget can be approved by both chambers. Actually, the General Assembly session is scheduled to end this Saturday. From an article this morning in Richmond Times-Dispatch, it does not look like they're going to finish the budget proceedings by Saturday because they have a number of issues that are larger and probably going to take a long time to get through. And they had so many bills at this session that they haven't had a chance to get together as a conference committee in some tangible form. So right now, it doesn't look like we're going to have a final budget by Saturday. So we'll just wait until we see where they are before we make any changes. So anything going forward, we will still use the Governor's budget until we get some clarity on what proposals come out of the Senate and House combined budget. And so that's really the update at this point that we have, and we'll continue to monitor what's going on in Richmond, especially those in education. But there's some other things that are affecting other places that may very well affect the education budget as well.
Right. Board members, any of you have any questions of Ms. Clark? Thank you, sir. Thank you for keeping this update. The next item is a roll call vote. Consideration of the Adoption of a Resolution Adopting a Policy to Govern the Allocation of Local Revenue to Portsmouth Public Schools. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Now, we can now discuss it. Yes, ma'am.
I'll go first. And there have been many of us that have talked about, discussed the possibility of a funding formula since I got here, since the 20, you know, since the, not the 2018, but the 2016 election, and really wanted to put Portsmouth in a good light, wanted to end the back and forth about the budget, wanted to give us a new olive branch, a new season of trust and respect. And as much as I would love to see a funding formula at this time, this one does not, has not met most of those requirements. And the two requirements that I'm speaking of are pretty much trust and respect. The fact that we ask questions, ask for more time, to come together basically in a conference committee like we're doing here, simply to sit down and discuss it, because I know that when I sit at my house and do budgets and we make big decisions about stuff, you sit down and you have a conversation, because it's just, it's just what you do. And to go into something where you're basically told this is what it is, and if you like it, great, if not, I'm sorry about your luck, but this is what we're going with. So to me, it's not, yes, the funding, I would like to see some discussion, but really, it's more about the situation in which it occurred. And so therefore, as much as I have wanted to see this and wanted to see this happen, I cannot support it at this time.
Ms. Schumake?
I concur.
Good evening.
I, too, was one of the individuals who supported a funding formula specifically when I ran, because I wanted to, as Board Member Duncan Hines had stated, to alleviate some of the tension between the two boards, between the two bodies. That did not happen. It was the complete opposite. So I, too, am not in favor of supporting this.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Well, I know that-
Oh, did you have your hand up? I didn't see your hand.
No, I thought you were going around because I didn't see anybody else had their hand up.
If we're going to go around, that's fine. Let her go first.
Oh, go ahead. Their hands were up, and I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
I didn't see anybody else's hand.
They had their hand up. I didn't see yours. All right, go ahead.
I am not in support of this. Number one, the manner to which this is being brought forward, I personally don't even feel that we should even at this point discuss it because it's already a done deal from the city council perspective. I also don't appreciate how this was brought forth. Our city council has already made it publicly known that it does not matter what we say or how we decide we're going to move forward. They have designated what we're going to do. So it will be a no vote from me as well.
Okay. Mr. Lamb?
Yeah. Yeah, I also was in, was in favor of this proposition. I know that Sarah had brought it to my attention a couple of years ago, and after doing further looking into it and research and so forth, I thought it was something that would actually help us moving into the spring season because we know how cankerous that this time is. And so I thought it would be something very good. I also thought that it could be something that could actually help both boards move in a general direction off of this. I thought that the formula that was presented back on February 10th would have been a very good starting point as a discussion to have started to work through. But after the last several weeks, when you have members on the committee that was appointed by both sides, city council as well as school board, is talking about and saying conflicting statements that supposedly, that did not supposedly occur by those that presented in the February 10th meeting, and then we had questions that we wanted answered to, as well as city council members did, too. And I thought the mayor did very well with regards to asking for another meeting with specific committee members to address those questions and concerns, and then to find out that the committee members were not even brought on board with this. And to this day, as far as I'm aware, our questions haven't been answered.
Correct.
And the one thing that really stuck out to me in this, and I got a copy of it right here, and I had mentioned on February 10th, this aspect of point number three.
Right.
And I would like to just, you know, kind of summarize this a little bit. Where it gets down to procedure to request an increase to the local contribution, you know, this is saying that we will notify the city council by resolution no later than April 1 to allow for inclusion in the city's operating deliberations. As long as I've been on this board, and this is going on my eighth year, we have had a joint meeting every February. You already know what we're asking for at that point. And then to go further and say, "The school board's resolution shall contain the following," and this was my point then, and it's my point this evening, that additional funding is required, the amount of the additional funding requested, the programmatic purpose for the additional funding, and that the school board supports an increase to any local tax rate to support the additional increase. Then it goes on to say, "The city council may revise this policy at its discretion if no other action is taken by the city council. This policy shall remain ineffective until modified by the city council." As far as I'm aware, or I know, there is no legal mandate, there is no code, state or otherwise, that any governing body, because we are also a governing body, one governing body cannot tell another governing body what they're going to put in a resolution. And to me, when they're saying that we will pass a resolution that supports a tax increase, to me, is they're just passing the buck. They are the ones that is mandated to do tax increases, not us. And so with that, and unfortunately, where this has gone, I had high hopes for it, but I cannot and I will not support this formula resolution as it is.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
I was never in favor of the funding formula, so, and I'm definitely not in favor of how things went. So I'm definitely voting no.
Okay.
But I wasn't going to do it. But I am disappointed that our last meeting, we had a plan, and we left out our meeting with a plan, and you guys changed it the next day. I personally feel like if we would have stuck to the plan that we originally went with, it could have been a difference maker. Because city council is known for when people come and speak to them and when the media's involved to change their mind. So I really feel like we would have had some more time if you actually would have went through with the plan. For that, I am disappointed in you as our chair.
Fine. I have no problems with that. Ms. Williams?
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Parent. It's been my experience on this board, coming upon my 12th year, that regardless of how much we stay down there speaking and whatever, they normally do what they're going to do anyway. And my disappointment was the fact that the city also appointed Gail Pittman as their person. We had Mr. Bridgewater and Dr. Roberts. But Gail wrote on Facebook that if we accepted this formula, it was like a death nail to the school system.
Right.
Because they were not really given input. You know, at first, she said, you know, the purpose, they had high hopes, too. But then in the end, it seemed more like a sham, like something they wanted to do anyway without input from the citizen committee members or whatever. So, you know, I had, I had high hopes, you know, like, like all of you all, that maybe that would help cut down some of the confusion when we go to budget season. But if you are not operating in good faith, and we can't even talk with you, because I know several of us sent them letters directly, we called them, we put it on Facebook, we did, all we asked, we didn't ask them to change their vote, we just asked for a discussion. Because this was the first time we'd heard it, because we'd been told that they were not to discuss it, they were going to unveil it, and then we would come together and both boards would have to agree. So none of those things took place. So of course, I will be voting no, because it was not done in good faith.
When this was presented to us on the 10th, you know, we did not have any input. Our two representatives once again asked to come, and they could not speak. We all heard, and we all got our, we all got our PowerPoint presentation. And that's the reason why I sent out to you the link. I asked Lauren to send out a link so that you could watch it. I watched the whole hour and a half, and I took notes. And bottom line is that the mayor specifically requested that the two city liaisons with their representatives and the school board with their representatives that we would meet. And when Reverend Patello and I got an email from the vice mayor, basically, she was asking for dates, and I gave her a date of the 18th that I could meet. And she called me, but she sent me an email late that evening of the 17th, in saying that she had not heard from Reverend Patello, and was I going to come to the meeting? And I said, "I didn't know that you were going to have a meeting because I have not heard back." So I, I said, "You know, I'll have to change my schedule because I wasn't notified that there was a meeting. I was waiting for you to call it." And so I got in touch with Reverend Patello. We both, we both came, and there were, our representatives were not there, theirs were not there. And it was like four people trying to review, and the only thing we had was the PowerPoint presentation. And so basically, we were just, we went over the PowerPoint, and they, of course, they had their viewpoint, we had our viewpoint, and we, we had an hour and a half of a dialogue that the vice mayor said it was a good dialogue. Well, it might have been a good dialogue, but it was not a good meeting. It was contentious, to say the least, simply because we didn't agree and didn't know why our representatives were not there, because they could have, I think they could have shed a lot of, they could have helped us, because you had four people that were not involved in this process. All we had is a piece of paper. And so then, when we met with them, and then I had, I had, we had a call meeting, we did discuss that we were going to, you know, the plan, try to get employees and that kind of thing, and that we would meet. Well, I did meet about 10:30 the next morning with Dr. Bracy and Mrs. Lauren and Mr. Falk, and I think Dwight was there, yeah, and Reverend Patello on my phone. So, you know, when you have, we had a meeting that evening, and of course, you have, you have events that evening, but then when you have the next morning, things change. And so what I tried to do, and is, and we talked through how we were going to notify personnel and have personnel, because I mean, that was going to be the very day we wanted, we had to get the information out. But then I, I asked Ms. Patterson, and she would call mayor's office, if I could come up and talk to him. And so I got a yes in 10 minutes. Well, then they called back and said, "Mr. Parent, he can't, he can't see you until 1:30." So we, you know, we waited, I waited, and we had, I thought, I thought we had an understanding that he was going to recommend to city council, and that's why this letter was sent. He said, "Write me a letter," which I wrote the letter, and delivered it to councilman, and, you know, spoke that evening. But the bottom line, even if we had 1,000 people in that room, it would not have made any difference. Because the bottom line, and this is just me having to have dealt with it, because I think Dr. Bracy and I, we all tried to come up with the best way to handle this, and then notify personnel at the last minute to try to get everybody to come. And that's, that doesn't mean that when the city manager presents her budget and we find out what that's going to look like, it doesn't mean that we're not going to have personnel to come and be an advocate, because I, too, am not voting for this. But the bottom line was that when the city council, and they're speaking back, back and forth, to me, their minds were, to me, this whole process was flawed from the very beginning. I think it was one of those, one of those processes that we're going to do this and so that we look good, and, you know, some, we all, I ran on the same thing, because I thought it would be a great idea for us to have a funding formula, to study it. And so when we got, we were presented with the information, you know, it was not going, I saw right off the bat, it was not going to be in our, in our favor, because, one, it was going to be like a half a million dollars short of what we actually need. And them not understanding about the standards of quality and all the requirements that we as a board, and they don't have those same requirements, we have different requirements to make sure that we take care of our kids and our employees. So, you know, we did everything we could to try to reach some kind of compromise, which I thought going into that meeting of that evening, that they were going to delay it to March 10th, where we could have both their representatives. If we'd have done what the mayor asked at the beginning, I think, Mr. Barnes, that might have been a different outcome. But that wasn't, that wasn't done. And so the bottom line is that they were going to vote that evening regardless of how we felt. And so you've got, you basically have a process that I thought was flawed from the very beginning, and they were going to, since they had heard from the experts. Now, I did contact my two, our two representatives. If they had had a chance to express their, their opinion that evening, I think that you would have found, public would have found, that they were not in agreement, because the bottom line is the consultant said, "This is the way it's going to be," and that was it. And so I, you know, I'm sorry that I did not please everybody on this board, and I reached out because I felt like that it was the right thing to do. We certainly had a plan to get all of the employees together, and that doesn't, and we still have that plan, that we're going to get all the employees, and because obviously they're going to pay, all you're going to get is $589,000, and that's going to be it. That's not enough, so we're going to get everybody, we're going to get all our employees, pack the chambers, and we're going to advocate, like we've done in years past, for them to push this budget. Now, I did ask the clerk to send you the agenda. They are going to be, because one of the things that we talked about, and you heard it that evening, about a meal tax, that a one cent will generate 1.3, then two cents would, anyway. So that is on their, their agenda. So I don't even know where the meal tax, but they have said, they had said to us that if, if Reverend Patello and I would come back, and I think I told you all that, if we would come back and talk with you and convince you to support the meal tax, because you only had two people that were in favor of the meal tax on city council. But that is now on the agenda. I don't know where that's going to go, but we're promised that if the meal tax is passed, that we would get, we would get an additional $1.3 million that would go to the schools. So I just wanted you to be aware of it, that they're going, they're going to discuss it. I don't know where that, where that goes, but I'm, I'm not pleased with, I'm just not, as I said, and you heard Dr. Bracy, if you saw the channel 13, both of us, the whole essence of that whole news thing was the fact that there is no trust. There's no trust between two parties. When one party will say one thing, and you think that they're, they're telling you the truth, and they're, they're supporting education, and then they turn around and then they, I mean, they don't even, I mean, they don't even give us the opportunity to delay it and meet and work out all the details of more information. They just shut it down that night and said, "This is what it's going to be." So anyway. Oh, Ms. Williams?
I'll defer to Ms. Williams, and then, then, then I want to make sure that I phrase what I need to phrase correctly.
Yes, yes, Ms.
Well, I'm not sure about a meal tax on there that they would want us to-
I don't know. I don't know what they're going to do with it.
-advocate for, because I thought they always told us if you go up one cent on the real estate tax, it might yield 700 to a million dollars for every penny.
670, something like that.
Yeah. So how could they yield that much from a meal tax? We don't have that many restaurants.
Because it's a traditional tax.
And I think they, you know, some of them had discussed that before, and I remember Mr. World telling them, "Where did you all get this information from? From what city?" Maybe it was the biggest city, but, but not Portsmouth. So, you know, I'm not, I don't see us going anywhere advocating for something that we don't really have any real information. That's just my, my thought on that.
Ms. Allen?
The first thing I want to say is, in one breath, we're saying that the voice of the people doesn't matter. And in the second breath, we're saying, "We need to advocate for something." I always encourage people to utilize their voice and their vote. I've already, I've expressed to you my disappointment in the fact that I felt we should have went forward with the full court press that we discussed in this room. And it's not to beat this up around the table, around the table, and around the table. But again, they needed to see the public in front of them. I specifically asked about robo-calls during that meeting. That would have been an opportunity to get parents involved, it would have been an opportunity to get staff involved. We didn't have that opportunity, which we thought we were going to have, because that's what we sat here and discussed. So I'm annoyed that when we make a decision in this room of the way we're going to go, and I felt we made a decision in this room, that we should move forward with that decision, and it's not for y'all to make, make a different decision and then not even include us in that decision-making process. So to me, the team is everybody around this table. The team isn't arbitrarily, and it's no offense to anybody who had that discussion, but at the end of the day, we won't know what could have happened if we hadn't had people in front of them saying that this is what we want. They have changed their minds before because they got pressure placed on them.
Right.
We didn't apply the pressure that we wanted to apply to them. So part of that is, we once again let them dangle something in front of us, write a letter. You should have never had to write a letter. What are you writing a letter for? And then the person that told you to write the letter didn't even support what he originally said we should do. So now, the meal tax, if they already don't have people to ask for it, what are we going down there advocating for a meal tax for?
I didn't, I didn't send it to you that we were, I just sent it to you because I wanted you to see it was on their agenda.
You know, to me, I just, again, I'm a member of this team, and I don't think that what my voice was heard or respected, and that bothers me. Moving forward, that can't happen again. It just can't. I think that, you know, when we as a body decide that we're moving- I think that, you know, when we as a body decide that we're moving forward with the plan, because again, they're, they're going to do what they want to do, but we don't have to lay down and just take it. And that's what we did. We laid down and we just took it, and we didn't rally our troops behind us. There are people who support Portsmouth Public Schools and support what we're trying to do, and it's time we start utilizing our army, and that's what we need to do. At this point, they've already decided, so getting people down there at this point to keep saying, "We should have started it from the beginning and not at the end." We're putting the horse after the cart at this point. They've already decided what they want to do, and those people need to be held accountable. So at this point, why wait until it's time for, we need to have people down there all the time, letting them know before it's time to vote, switch them out. Sometimes get teachers, sometimes get other staff, sometimes get the parents, but every meeting, moving up to budget, people who support us need to be there supporting us. So maybe they have a chance to change something before it gets to that point where they're voting on a budget.
Okay. Comments? Well, I've, I've heard your comments, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I just want to say too, that we had a discussion, at no time did we vote that, you know, like now, we're talking, we're expressing, but it was never like, and, and to me, you know, we were all trying to throw out ideas of what we could do, but I believe we left that meeting, was it 9 o'clock at night?
Yeah.
Almost 10.
Almost 10.
It was 10.
And then the meeting, their meeting, was the next day.
At 10:30.
So, you know, we didn't have a lot of time, to me, anyway, but to put out robo calls to parents or teachers after midnight, after 10 o'clock at night, that we need you there tomorrow, that's kind of hard. I think the timeframe too was kind of off, but we were just trying to do everything that we could. I saw the press conference on TV, I thought that was good, except that we did not get the group of people there to speak. I guess, you know, we maybe did have, but I do understand, you know, but it was, it was short notice, everybody was disgusted, because we just got the word that they are going to do this. I think Mr. Fausto, unless it was on the agenda for, for that Tuesday night, very disrespectful.
And that's the reason why I called.
And I do understand your point, but just like we, we do a robo call at 7:00 AM that schools close, or, you know what I mean, same difference to me, we, we, I just hate that we did not, even if we put the robo call out at 10, there would have been people who would have shown up if given the opportunity. I think there would have been, but we'll never know. And that's the problem, that we'll never know.
Right. Okay. I accept full responsibility. I, I'm a tough guy, I've been in this school system for 40 years, and nine years on this board, and, you know, when you get in a meeting at 10:30, and you've got to do a lot of things, and things, things change, and we did the best, we did the best we could in the time we had, and I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I'm sorry that I displeased you, and I, I always, 99.9%, when you ask me to do something, I do it. And you were not in that room while, while a discussion was going on, and we had very little time to get all those things that, that were good suggestions. So, anyway. Yes, Mr. Lamb?
Just a couple of things here, and, and I don't think we're beating a dead horse on this.
So go ahead and beat me up, I don't really care at this point.
I'm not trying to beat you up, I'm expressing an opinion.
I accept full responsibility.
No, 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 this has nothing to do with you. I, I think it's good that there's, that we're getting information out.
Right.
In, in this discussion. You know, I found it interesting, the meal tax.
I don't know what they're going to do with it.
Exactly. The irony of that meal tax is, as I recall, you know, they told you that, that only two were in support, that only two members on the, and then somehow later on, I heard in discussions that more people, or more on that board, or on council was supporting it. I mean, so there's another transparency, he said, she said. The irony of that is, even from that, in that meeting, they even said that they tried to do a meal tax last spring, but there was pushback. That, that's on, that's on tape, and that's not me saying it, or, or summarizing.
Correct.
So now they're going to move forward on a meal tax.
Well, it's on, for them to discuss.
On the agenda, yeah, absolutely.
You don't know where, where are they going with it?
But, but just the irony of it all, it does speak to a transparency, you know, issue. You know, we're talking about how much of the meal tax would include schools. I had heard that supposedly a significant amount of it, but during the city council meeting, it was like less than half, or it was, you know, that came out, that was spoken to. So, I mean, we're throwing things out, we're saying we're going to tax, you know.
Not us.
No, not us, but I'm saying, it's being said, you know, we're taxing businesses and so forth, but there's no clear answers with any of this. And then I think even Ms. Williams is correct too, when asking, "Where's all this money going to come from?" And if you noticed, they even said that property value assessments, or that property values, that there was going to be more revenue generated off property value. See, that was said in that meeting. Lo and behold, just, I want to say this morning, you know, I got a text from a friend that said, "Hey, my assessments went up."
Yeah.
"I haven't made any improvements."
I did too.
So I, I think we got an idea a little bit of what you can summarize of what's going on, or, or what's, how they're going to cover this. Again, my whole issue has been the transparency part of this, and, and the point three that I brought up.
Right.
Which, if, if allowed be, I, you know, they've already voted on it, as my colleague, Ms. Allen, has said, they're putting this in place, but again, I still don't see how legally they can require us to pass a resolution with specific, so are they saying that if we don't do that, then they're not, I mean, I, I, how can they do that?
I think you, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm, I am.
Right.
I'll defer.
Okay. All right. And the reason why this is on the, the agenda, and I could have very easily saved myself this, I mean, our discussion, but when I listened to an hour and a half, it was mentioned that we, both parties, needed to come together, and that's the reason why I think that we as a board need to vote on this. They've already voted, they were not open for us to have a meeting so that we could work out some details by the 10th, so they shut the whole thing down, and I think that was, that's the way it was planned all along. But anyway, hearing no more discussion, I think we are now ready to vote. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mrs. Schumake?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Parrott?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is roll call consideration of a contract 963-B, 1924, custodial supplies.
Move for approval. Sorry, I had.
Motion's been made by Ms. Hines, second. Ms. Allen, any discussion? Had an opportunity to read it. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
unanimous.
The next item is consideration of a contract 970P-1924, office supplies and related services. Was the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made by Hines, sec, Mr. Barnes, did you second it?
I was going to.
I heard a voice over there. All right. Any discussion?
I laughed because you said.
Any discussion? No discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
unanimous.
The next item is roll call, consideration of the 2021 instructional calendar, and you've got a copy of that, and have you had a chance to really study?
I did, and I sent in some questions. I'm sorry, I'm, we haven't, can we discuss it without a motion?
Well, let's have a motion first, and then.
All right, move for approval.
Second.
That sounded a little disgusting, sorry.
Now we can add, we can have a discussion.
I did email in some questions about the instructional calendar earlier this week, and I haven't, unless they came in, like between 4:30, 5 o'clock this afternoon, I can retrieve that, hang tight. I mean, if you want me, because it was three points, so I can.
I, I got, yeah, it went to my, it went, it went to my church. Go ahead.
Okay. But the first question was with extra time built in for the weather, is, is there a way that we can set up days that are flexible in nature should we not need them? Number two, can we have somebody, calendar committee superintendent, to look at making that Wednesday before Thanksgiving a full day off, since we have some extra time built in? And number three, can we get the final days that teachers report off that, for that Monday? Because when you look at the final day off, it's either Monday, it's either Friday or Monday. I understand that, but I know that that does cause some heartache and some, some rivalries between some buildings, that some have to work, you know, an extra day and some don't, just depending on the call of the principal. So I, I don't know if there's a way that we could, could set a final day off. And those were really, really the questions, considering that we're looking at the 2% raise, and that we do have nine days built in, and so really, these questions, to me, when I, when I thought them out, is are we looking at days, or are we looking at hours? And so it's, it's a conflict of, and since we've added the, the, the extra time, we've got nine extra days, and so just looking for some, some, I hate to say carrots to put in front of the horse, but some just things to make the year move a little smoother and give some, some bright spots in the weather, in, in the calendar, should we not need all nine days for the weather?
Dr. Gomar, can, did you, didn't you work on the calendar?
Did, without having received an email and trying to remember the points, can we take them one by one?
Yes, 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 not a problem. It says with the extra time built in for the weather, could we set up days that are flexible in nature should we not need them for weather? So as we get to maybe March and April, are there days that we could pending be?
Bring the end of the year closer.
Correct.
That would be the pleasure of the board.
Correct.
And recommendation of superintendent, but it can be done.
I mean, even if it's a, even if it's a half day, you know, that Friday before spring break becomes a half day, just something, because by, by March, April, I lovingly call March the batan death march. There's, there's no breaks from President's Day to, to spring break. So by March, if we haven't used them, we don't, if we haven't used them, I don't think we're really going to use them between March and, and May, unless we have knock, 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 I'm not going to say anything. But typically, that's not a time where you're using them. So if we could set up some to-be-determined half-days or early releases, or days off, pending weather, I think since we have nine days built in, maybe you could throw one there. And I'm still going to ask for that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, just simply because that's, that turns that weekend into a nice, long weekend, and I think every year I've asked that question. And just looking at making that Friday the last day that everybody reports, and my, my solution for that would be make that whole last week maybe early release, because I still know we've got retakes going, you're still somewhat in testing mode when you get there, and so I understand that there's that. And so those are those three points.
Yes, ma'am. So, one and three, the answer is, there's nothing that prohibits those two things.
Okay.
That will be recommendation of superintendent, you all's call.
Okay.
The challenge with the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is this, if we lose that, then we go to 179 as opposed to a flush 180 days in attendance. That's not so much of a big deal in terms of the hours per se, but for that day, we get a day on record when really we're here, it's an early dismissal date. So there's really, if, if that makes sense. If we were to wipe that out, I, I guess what I'm saying is, we, to, to do that would wound our chances of being able to do the first thing that you requested, because it would eat into the reserve.
Okay.
If that makes sense. We have, you'd mentioned eight, I mean, nine, I believe it's eight days that are built in due to the extra minutes.
Okay.
So if we, if we took that day off, now we're down to seven.
Okay.
If we have a day or two of inclement weather, that eats at that, and it might ultimately prohibit us from being able to get out earlier as you've asked or proposed in June. So I think what needs to happen is some priorities ultimately have to be set around what we want to do with extra time if we don't use it for inclement weather. The disadvantage of the Thanksgiving Day is typically, we don't have inclement weather before Thanksgiving.
Correct.
Unless it's some of these squirrely hurricanes that we've had lately.
God bless you.
So.
God bless you.
It's tough to want to use days before we get into snow, which is usually the main reason we're out of school. But you all drive that train. It's really, it's, it's really the pleasure of the board. If you direct me to do it, I'll make it happen, is what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm just, as a teacher, and as a, as a mom, and those, they, they kind of go hand in hand, but they kind of don't. You, we've given these extra minutes, and there's got to be a plan that if we don't use them, it should be a carrot, it should be a diamond in the rough, that we do get to use these to make things a little bit more, and, and I'm going to say endurable, because some days you do have to endure, you know, some weeks you're enduring, especially during March and April. So I, I, I would prefer having it at the end compared to knocking us, you know, as much as I would love for that Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, but I would rather put them at the end. My only concern with putting them at the end is that testing schedules are created based on the end of the school year, and so if we don't make those decisions right now for May and June, then we're not getting any days off this year, even with the extra amount, so.
And, and I tried, I know that you've expressed that before. I, I tried to give a calendar, present a calendar that reflected that day off. It's just that we got right down to 180, and I didn't want to get into a situation where we were beneath that threshold.
Okay.
Not to say that we can't be, we, we can be. It's just that, when I showed you the comparables for, for the region, a lot of places were 182, 181, we were already on the lower end with 180, and I just in good faith did not want to present a 179.
Yeah, but our 180 is more equivalent to about a 188.
It is, when you look at it in terms of hours.
Right, and so that, and I come, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I come back to that question, are we looking at hours, or are we looking at days? Because you can certify one way or the other. That's, that's where, that's where I'm going with that. I personally would like to see a half day, or a full day somewhere in March, and I would like to see maybe the Friday before spring break become a half day, to kind of give some carrots and to give some glimmer of some springtime weather and getting some sunshine for those that suffer from lack of sunshine, lack of some time off, and because I really think that days off would, and the need for substitutes may decrease if you have some built-in breaks, especially in those long hauls.
Okay.
I'm finished for now.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah. I guess my, my thing was to, you know, allow the superintendent to look at it with, you know, his, his team or whatever, and the problem that we run into now is not just, you know, the snow or whatever, but sometimes even here, when it's a storm, or the rain and the flooding, that you, you've got to just about close the schools because of, you know, the kids out in the morning and the, you know, climate change or whatever. It's not just snow, because we do, and maybe in April or whatever, we can get a lot of torrential rains or stuff like that, so. But I do like your suggestion of, I don't know, on the end or whatever, so they can get out earlier, or something like that.
One thing that I love, really love, is that teachers get two weeks, well, I'm going to say Christmas vacation. That is great.
There's a lot of them don't.
Right. Because we were the only division in the region that.
That is awesome.
I know, I know, rub it in, rub it in.
Right.
We got close.
That was an express priority.
Yes, sir.
A quarterly workday was an express priority of the board, so we went into the process with those as our comps.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll take a look at it and bring it back for the regular board meeting.
So do I need to withdraw my motion? So, do I need to withdraw my motion if we're not voting on it tonight? Or do you want to vote on it and bring us back and amend it? Okay.
Do you need the motion to pass?
The motion is.
You need to move to pass the motion to the next hearing or for consideration of the Superintendent.
Move to pass the motion to the next board meeting.
Second.
Second.
Now, any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, we're voting to move.
Go.
To pass, it'll be on the.
Nineteenth. March nineteenth.
Gosh, it's months going by so fast, yes, agenda, okay? Roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Yes.
I just love that.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hammer?
Yes, ma'am. All right. Wow. A copy of the, oh, we have a copy, the next item is the Agenda Review of March 19th. Receive a copy of that. Is there any discussion? Put your hands up.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Looking at, I'm not exactly sure which one I want to look at, budget and planning, I'm going to go for there. I'm looking for a contract for rezoning. And I don't see one.
Still in the process.
Still, okay, we'll just go to, we'll just put that on hold for comments. Is that all right? Unless we want to have a discussion now about it.
Let me get that for you.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah?
Consideration of School Board's proposed operating budget.
Ms. Allen, hand it up.
Did you see? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Allen?
I remember maybe a couple of meetings ago, there was a question about having some sort of current technical education presentation.
All right.
It was two or three meetings ago, we asked for one.
Okay.
What's, what's being, what's going well, what's not going well.
Okay.
I believe that was like two or three meetings ago.
All right. Could that come under the curriculum and instruction report? Dr. Bracy?
I think what we were trying to do, we were trying to get a curriculum and instruction committee meeting scheduled first. That's what we were trying to do, but we, we had to cancel, the last one was the same day as the board meeting.
And now it's Monday, I believe, if memory serves me correct.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, it's on Monday, yes, the sixteenth. And we will definitely discuss that, Ms. Allen, because that is one of my, that was one of the recommendations I had when we were talking about budget as well, was evaluating what's good, what's bad, and I would also like to look at our pathways for certifications as well, so that will definitely be discussed. And so, I don't, isn't there a CTE recognition month, like a CTE education month as well? Is that, no, 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 like one of the months for like Youth Art Month, isn't there a CTE?
We already had it.
We already had it. That was in February. It was February.
February was CTE.
Okay.
We could, I mean, if y'all are going to give the report, are you asking Ms. Allen for it to be on the official agenda, or do you, would it be all right if the two board members give the report, or do you want to hear from?
Mr. Hill. I'd like to hear from Mr. Hill.
Okay.
Because there'd be questions that they wouldn't be able to answer.
Does Mr., I've never been, does Mr. Hill ever go to CNI meeting? Is he part of?
No, he'll just come here and report whatever, update on whatever they're doing, I guess.
I would just add it.
CTE presentation.
Right, please. Any other discussion concerning the budget? I mean, the budget.
Is this for the nineteenth, excuse me?
Nineteenth, March nineteenth.
Can I give him enough time to pull together what's working, what's not working? I want to be fair to him.
Okay.
Well.
We can chat.
Okay.
And if not, we'll schedule it for maybe the work session.
Yeah, I want to be fair to him, just to kind of be like, ooh, let's get it real quick.
Okay. All right, the next item on the Agenda, discussion, Board Members' Reports. Schumake?
I don't necessarily have a report.
Okay.
But I would like to thank all of the teachers and the principals in Portsmouth Public Schools that made every effort to make Dr. Seuss Day Read Across America a success. That was wonderful. As usual, I had a wonderful time. Also, really quickly, Board Member Allen had a birthday.
Oh.
This week.
Well, happy birthday.
So, I feel that we should sing happy birthday to her.
I won't sing the rest of the song.
Thank you so much for the embarrassment.
Happy 21st birthday.
No, she had 21, she liked.
Etha, I'm finished.
Thank you. Thanks.
Do we have any?
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to first give a shout out to all our basketball teams for making the playoffs. But a special shout out to Wilkson High School who will be going to state. It'll be good to see us in attendance at those games.
Do you have the details for that?
Well, maybe not the first one.
Keep it posted.
Also, just to piggyback off of Ms. Schumake, Monday was a great success. I was at three schools, Pop View, West Haven, and Lakeview, and they, they all had great programs that they grabbed.
I didn't get refreshments, what state, and I forgot.
Well, I'm going to stay away from the refreshment.
Drink the water.
But.
It was a good time.
And I, I forgot to mention in our last meeting that John Tyler had a, a great Black History show, it was about a month ago. They had the Alphas and the AKAs, but it was a great show, I enjoyed it.
Good.
They dressed up as people from the old times, but it was, it was a great show and I really enjoyed it, just wanted to give them a shout out too.
Good. Ms. Williams, did you?
I was just going to ask, have we done anything to prepare for the coronavirus pandemic? I mean, did they, did they put out?
Because you know there's one in Hampton right now. They said something about Hampton, Santeron.
Well, according to this afternoon, Virginia did not have any confirmed cases.
Yeah, the Santeron wasn't a confirmed one.
Okay. And the one I heard in Norfolk, so that wasn't confirmed.
Yeah, but usually when they start a pandemic, you know, the city public health, they usually put out something that they have locations of what you.
Yeah, they've already.
Do we have that in the cities?
And they've reached out to us for a representative for the school division to serve on that.
That committee?
That committee.
Okay.
So, the nurse supervisor will be representing us.
So, we're going to pass the word to teachers and students and parents, keep them home when they're sick. What's this going to do to our attendance, but keep them home.
Well, maybe we'll get a grace from the state, because it's not, I mean.
Yeah.
Let's just pray that it doesn't, it's not like.
I think we just have to prepare.
We got to be prepared. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to be lengthy, so I got a few things on my list. So, if anybody else has anything they would like to shout out, I will defer to you so I can hit my list. Okay.
Shout out to Social Worker Month, so shout out to the social workers of Portsmouth Public Schools. And then I just had one question, when do we get our budget books?
I asked that question, when do we get the budget books?
We are working on that now. Hopefully, sometime next week, mid to the end of week, we will have the book ready so that you guys can look through and get your questions in and so on and so forth.
Okay. That's it for me.
Okay. Okay, but to piggyback off Mrs. Williams, for anybody listening, watching, this would be a great time to send in some Lysol or Clorox wipes to your teachers, some extra hand sanitizer, some tissues. I know my house was empty, and, you know, when you run a household and it gets empty, that's expensive when you go shopping, but there was a few extra things thrown in and a few extra things that went in Monday just for those classrooms. Number two, have we looked at doing a deeper disinfectant while we're out on for spring break of our buildings to make sure that we're keeping them clean? Just, you know, because I know I go through my classroom, tabletops, door handles, light switches, the commonly touched areas, but I know that some teachers don't always have the time or the materials to do that, so I want to make sure that our custodians are taking those deeper sweeps through the classroom to kind of keep this at bay. To go along with that, at Simonsdale Elementary, from what I hear from a few students, is that there's a lack of hot water upstairs, which is not necessarily a good thing to have when you've got some viruses going around. And so, if we could get somebody to look at that and report back as to far, as to far as what that's, you know, what the case is really there.
We got a plumbing problem.
Exactly, so I just would like for somebody to.
You know about it? You don't know about, all right, but you got it on your list, all right.
All right, it's on my list, so.
It's listed.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. So, I'm done with the virus, so I'm going to move on to.
Good, I'm done with it too.
Yes, so I'm going to move on to the RFP for rezoning. Now, we've sat at this table since August and talked about what needs to happen in August. Again, I walked away from the table in August thinking that we had some sort of plan, and then we come back in September, and then we come back in October, and we're still deliberating over the plan. We were told in October it would be out in about six to eight weeks, and by my calculations, we should have had a RFP about February, and here we are in March, and we don't even have an RFP out. And what really just concreted it for me is we had two contracts tonight that were open October 14th to September 10th, and then it took us five months to award those contracts. And it's going to take a while to award this RFP for rezoning. I mean, you're talking, you know, you're talking data, you're talking rezoning, you're talking parent meetings, we're talking educational meetings for the parents. This is not the solution that we wanted in August, September, October, because now we're into next year, and we're not going to have a solution by the time for next year. And so, if we're not going to have an RFP out, it's going to be my request to have staff look at it and make the decision just for Churchland until we can get a full RFP, because this, this problem is not going to be solved. We're going to be having the same discussion in August, and we're going to have the same parents, and we're different parents now, because we, we just put out a phone call yesterday saying, hey, your kids can do for preschool, hey, you know, registration is going to be open next month, get your stuff together and get your kids here. So, it's not just the, the parents that we have put off this year, it's going to be the parents that we're putting off next year. And here we are, been talking about this problem, been asking and asking and asking about this problem, and I still have nothing. So, I'm a bit frustrated at that piece of this, because this is something that we decided needed to be done, and it's not done. And so, that's, that's my second piece. My third piece is, and then I'm done after three, I believe in threes.
Can we address that?
Do you and Mr. Thomas know exactly where we are in that process?
We started the process, and we started to look at a full everything, and as we started to go through that process, obviously, schools and construction was way down the line, so a full wouldn't make sense at that point. So, we started there, and then we kind of regrouped, and I talked to Dr. Bracy, and we said, well, why don't we go back and do just Churchland? And I'm honest, I researched a lot of different models that I saw across the state, and it's just been overcome by a number of things.
And I get that, and so.
That's kind of where we, where we left off. I have it prepared, we have something on board, but we're trying to get the last finished documentation, those numbers that we can give to a vendor, that they can give us an accurate RFP and an accurate response, based on where we've been over the last four or five years, the history with the schools, so on and so forth. So, I take, I take that on my end. That's, some of that's on my, on my plate, because I haven't been able to pull it all together. So, to this board, I apologize.
And I get that, because I also know the other things we have been dealing with, but at the same time.
That's on your plate.
Exactly, and but at the same time, we're going to be having these same discussions again if, and it, and your plight is our plight, and I, and I, this is done with sympathy and it's done, but at the same time, I don't want to keep beating this dead horse. Here we are.
All right, do you see April or May, Mr. Falk? Do you see April or May?
It'll be out definitely before then.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely, we'll give you an update.
We can do the, I'll get with Dr. Simmons, and we'll, we get with transportation, and we can start looking at some things within the house ourselves, so that we will have a backup plan in place before we open up the school year. Whether it comes in time with the RFP, if not, we'll do something internally to adjust the numbers in the Churchland area.
Okay.
So, we'll be taken care of.
And simply because when you look at RFPs that have been out, whether it's for, you know, for complete redistricting, complete rezoning, or even partial, you're still looking at three to four months down the pipeline before it's complete. And so, if I'm looking at that, school's already out, registration's already done, and if we don't have any resolution or a plan for resolution, then we possibly lose people that are not going to enroll their students in Portsmouth Public Schools because of the uncertainty. And so, I just, I feel that angst, and I feel that we just want, we want to have some resolution one way or the other to this, so.
I think they've heard it.
Okay.
All right, now what's your next?
Third one, since I believe it's October, I've, there's a, there's a crosswalk issue with Norcom and Parkview, and I don't feel as if we've gotten a full resolution to that, so I'm just, I'm wondering where we are with, with that. And I know you've got to deal with city and planning and traffic, so if you can enlighten.
I'll defer to Dr. Simmons, because he's been having meetings with the city architect in reference to that. You want to give where we are with that, because I knew you've shared with me.
So, I've been meeting with the city architect, and so we just met last week, and so that's really pretty much on the city side, we're trying to push it from our end.
Okay.
We have a semi-commitment for Parkview in the spring, in terms of they've got to do their getting out process and get their numbers and funding and all of that. And so, I see Norcom is going to be a little bit more difficult, because I think that's a double lane, and they've got the concrete barrier that they may have to move back and do some things, so he's a little bit less committed to that one, because that's going to take a lot more than the Parkview one. But we are meeting monthly, so I've established those, so that we can keep everybody updated as to where we are, and we're doing everything on our end in terms of try to push them forward with that, but he's, that's a city issue in terms of them trying to get that done for us.
Okay, thank you. I just, I have citizens that are parents and that, right. I just try to give some resolution and some answers, and they're not always ours to give. I get that. I just needed it out, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other, any other comments? Any other?
Oh, I did go somewhere.
Well, I'm glad.
I said, let me give, let me give something good.
Where'd you go?
No, and I'm sorry, I forgot, and I want to give it its proper name, so hang on. This past Saturday, I went to the Second Annual Youth Resilience Expo at Norfolk Botanical Gardens, and so we had two, two Portsmouth schools that were there, Victory Elementary and I C Norcom, and so they were dealing with erosion. And so, the students, there were elementary presentations, and there were high school presentations, but to see, especially to see the fourth graders, because they're just, they're babies, they're kids. But to, but for them to be standing out there and speaking so intelligently and so proudly of the work that they've done, where they have researched rain gardens and plants and native plants that keep erosion at bay, and to get rid of Lake Victory. And I think since we have built Victory, there's always been a lake at the very end when we have those heavy rains, whether it be November or April. So, working on that and working on drainage, and then having the Norcom High School students looking at creating a rain ditch there between the parking lot and the tennis court, you know, and what their plan would be and why they would do certain things and why some plants are invasive and not. But just, just to see our Portsmouth students out of their comfort zone, presenting and knowledgeable and putting a good face forward is always, is always a welcome. But we had, there were schools there, Maury and Chesapeake Primary and Intermediate, or Chesapeake Intermediate School are one of them, I forget, but schools from all over, so it was a good showing, but it's always nice when you can.